If my stomach growls, please forgive me, I'm starving.
Welcome to the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four workshop session of Richmond Community Schools. For trustees, would you please join me in saying our pledge of allegiance?
The Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and can we please have our mission and vision statement?
Mission statement, Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare for the different lives of choice, purpose, and service.
Well said.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is public commentary. Do we have anybody signed up for public commentary?
We do not.
So next on the agenda is our workshop session of students.
President Warren, trustees. I had come before you this evening with a extraordinary host of educators throughout our corporation and leaders through our corporation that have quite the presentation prepared to address, as we've discussed before, where we are, where we've been, and where we're going when it comes to achievements in this role. Without further ado, and that's still going to be coming from our various chiefs of education in those intents, Mr. Baker, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, we're trustees, good evening. Before I get started on this presentation, I'm going to show you some positive things happening in the academic realm of RCS, but I want to let you know, we have a lot of work to do. And by no means, I think, are any of us pleased with our current data. We are working daily to improve that data to get it back where it needs to be. So the first slide I have for you is, when we give the iReady math and reading assessment, we give it three times a year. They give us a projected proficiency that is a prediction of how many of our students or what percent of our students will pass the iLearn assessment. And so we didn't take the reading assessment last year, we only took the math. So my only comparison is math this year. You can see in two thousand and twenty-two, our third graders, twenty-two, twenty-three, forty percent of them were projected to pass iLearn in third grade math, and this year, for middle of the year, it's forty-four percent. So middle of the year last year is forty percent, middle of the year this year is forty-four percent. Fourth grade, last year was twenty-three percent, and middle of the year this year is twenty-nine percent. So my two testable iLearn grades at elementary level, third and fourth grade, we have seen an increase of projected pass rates for iLearn. So nice little, that's a nice little way to start.
What was the actual then for twenty-two, twenty-three?
What was the actual?
Yes, if we have the projected, what was the act?
Um, I have it on my computer.
I mean, it's our.
Yeah, I have it on my computer. So I will tell you that first grade, I mean, third grade, last year we were forty projected, and we maybe were slightly like thirty-eight, but in fourth grade, we were projected to be twenty-three, and we were thirty-six. And then after that, it kind of levels out and is very within maybe three percentage points of the prediction. Is somebody switching this?
You can.
Yeah. Alrighty, iReady third grade. Really what I want you to view here is the dotted lines on the graph, on both of the graphs. The first graph on the left is third grade English Language Arts iReady assessment from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. And that line represents our student lexile for third graders, how it's changed from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. Our average lexile was a four forty-six point seven six in the fall, and in the winter, it went to a five fifty-six point one six. That's a, that's a year, a little over a year's growth in reading level average for our third graders in half of a school year. In math, we have a little bit more data for third grade. You can see that when these third graders were in second grade, back in the fall of twenty-two, twenty-three, their average quantile score measured by iReady was a one ninety-eight point eighteen. And you can see by the winter, it was a two eighty, and by the spring, at the end of last year, it was a three seventy-one. When they came back to school this fall, they dipped a little bit, and every one of our grade levels dipped a little bit when looking at this metric. But they were a three forty-five point zero two in the fall, but in the winter, a four forty-six point zero one. Last, last winter, they were a two eighty. So from two eighty last winter to this winter, four forty-six point zero one. Really nice, really nice performance, and really nice growth there. The next slide, iReady fourth grade, starting on the left, English Language Arts. Our fourth graders' lexile to start the year, the average was a three thirty-four point nine, and at Christmas, oh, that's not right. Not a three thirty-four point nine. I think, I have to look at that. I copied and pasted the little red numbers, and I don't think I changed those. So neither one, it's higher than that in both of those, and I'll have to get that data for you. But in math, you can see these fourth graders, when they started third grade last year, in the fall of twenty-two, their average quantile was a three forty-five point forty-six, and it grew to a four twenty-six in the winter, and a four eighty in the spring, and dipped just slightly this fall from a four eighty to a four sixty-six. But now they are up at a five forty-six point four five at the winter. Last year, they were at a four twenty-six, one hundred and twenty quantile points higher than they were last winter. Questions about that?
Is that average, lexile, is that average in the district and the state?
That's our average for RCS. And the colored charts behind it are not associated with the dotted line.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I'm just showing you the dotted line right now. iReady math. So when the students take the assessment, they're ranked in one of five categories, three or more grade levels below, two grade levels below, one grade level below, early on grade level, and then mid or above grade level. And you can see in that first column in twenty-two, twenty-three, where our students ranked at the middle of the year in math. And then you can see in the twenty-three, twenty-four column where we rank currently when we assess this middle of the year. The differences you're going to see were one percent lower in three or more grade levels below, or one percent lower in two or more grade levels below, or two percent lower in one grade level below, three percent higher in early on grade level, and the same with mid or above grade level. So continuing to make progress there. Growth, this is something I've really focused on. We have to grow to change our achievement scores. In twenty-two, twenty-three, at the very top, you can see we had, our average growth was fifty percent in the middle of the year and, or our typical growth. And then this last winter, the assessment we just took, as compared to last middle of the year assessment last year, we are at fifty-six percent typical growth. And down below is stretch growth, where we were at six percent. Of our students had met their stretch growth goal last year at this point, and we are up to eight percent now. That, that math growth is great, but let's check, the reading growth is outstanding. iReady reading, I don't have anything to compare it to from last year. So we are three or more grade levels below at twenty-one percent, two or more grade levels below at twelve, one grade level below at thirty-four, early on grade level at sixteen, and mid or above grade level at seventeen. But when we go to the growth this school year, the average growth of our students, this is grades three through eight, is seventy-five percent as compared to fifty-six percent in math. And then the student, the number of students that have met stretch growth this year in our district, fifteen percent of our students have met that goal. And I don't know.
What's that mean, stretch growth?
Stretch growth, Mark and I were discussing that earlier. Yeah, give it a go.
So, so typical growth, they measure based on where you start in that grade level. They say typical growth is you should grow this much in an entire year. So if a student meets their typical growth, they met their benchmark that they were supposed to hit. Stretch growth is based on you have to get your typical growth, and then there's another metric that puts you on the pathway to being grade level. So let's say they're thirty-five percent below, they meet their typical growth, which is maybe twenty-two percent. Well, if they hit that other thirteen percent, then they meet their stretch growth for the year.
And from the instructional standpoint, if I can interject with educators, when we speak with our classroom teachers and they share with us their goals, our students unfortunately have been actively challenged in the past and are relatively behind, wanting to wear regular growth is not going to be enough for them to, for us really to observe and see the type of success that we aspire for. And so having these stretch growth goals met and percentages increased, it's again, just affirmation that the independent steps that we're taking, the thing to take.
And maybe a better example would be if, let's say, a fourth grader tested a second grade level. Let's say they say their typical growth would be that they get to the third grade level, and a stretch growth would be that they get to the midpoint of that grade year. So they've done basically a year and a half. They met their typical, and then they hit that stretch growth back to proficiency.
Are you seeing this corresponding with the NIT curriculum? Is that confirming this or?
I mean, I think everything we're doing, NIT, NIT-related, data meeting related, I think all of it ties in to what we're seeing with the improvement in data.
And keep in mind, NIT is the trouble frame, the three pillars or tenets or cadence that come with NIT, as we discussed before, that I thought, that I subscribe to, the intentionality. It's an intentional framework that allows for those successful hazard teaching the best practices to be brought. Now, it's the phone intentionally to address particular matters and particular areas of growth. The collaboration, the peer-to-peer collaboration is one thing found with the NIT initiative and framework that allow peers to bounce ideas off one another. So that if I have a third grade, I'm sorry, a fourth grader that's reading at a second grade level, and you as well have similar demographics, if you have successful best practices that I could incorporate within my own teaching practices, the NIT framework allows for time intentional framework so that we can collaborate. Then thirdly, the sustainability, and I think that's what we're seeing, because typically when you see this type of growth from a particular initiative, you'll see it yo-yo. In other words, it will fluctuate, whereas this sustained growth. And of course, we're looking at from one year to the other, but this is, I appreciate Mr. Baker's statement that this is nice data, that it's nice being modest. But this, especially for Richmond, it lets us know that, one, our faculty staff are working their tire slip and working their, themselves to put our students in a position to be successful. But the NIT is nothing more than capturing all the best practices and putting them into your way. But yes, to answer your question, it's working.
Yep, and just another thing that is, I think, new, at least to me here in Richmond, you know, I brought this from my previous district, but we are very transparent with our teachers and our principals about the data. Sometimes tough conversations need to take place, but they are respectful and professional conversations. And I create a spreadsheet with all of our iReady data for math and reading that breaks it down by teacher, and then it breaks it down by school and grade level. So for example, if Mark is on the first grade team at Charles, and I'm on the first grade team at Westview, and the growth data at Charles and performance data is higher or lower, like substantially, then Mark and I need to talk. I need to figure out what Mark's doing with his students, or what I'm, Mark needs to find out what I'm doing with my students. And we've, we've started that conversation, and typically, the teachers who teach together, their data is very similar. It's usually different from building to building, but my best data conversation I had took place at Star Elementary a week or so ago, when we had two teachers whose growth data was forty percent, forty percent different. And those teachers could have panicked and could have given me every reason in the world as to why that was the case, but they didn't. And we had a wonderful conversation about where are we going to go from that point, and they had already put a really nice plan in place prior to me even walking in there. They didn't even know I was going to be in that meeting, and those are the things that are taking place.
And that speaks to what the charge that you all have put before me as superintendent and put for us as administrative team, you know, our building owners as well, is to create a professional learning organization, and that's what professional learning organizations contain, is that type of cooperation and that type of candidness so as to improve and get better with intentionality.
Right.
So iReady is new, right? So for RCS?
It's new for us. Last year, we did it in math, and this year, we're doing it in math.
It's something I familiar with, I really prefer iReady as a parent. Do you all ever dig into the difference, like take a sample sizing with iLearn, iRead, and iReady? Or have you gotten to that point of, you know, taking a kid that did great on iReady but did terrible on iLearn? Not that that, you know, it's like, what do you do with that information? But because I, I feel like iReady isn't very, I like it as a diagnostic tool. I don't know if it's more well-rounded, right? That's not my world, but, you know, to kind of see the differences in the standardized testing, how we've looked at what it tells us.
I have not really looked at what it tells us between iLearn and iReady, because they're built with the same concept and the same style of question. But what I do have is on EES Analytics, one of the reports on EES Analytics is called a WIN report, W-I-N. And it breaks down every student with a win score. And so the higher the score from zero to a hundred, the higher priority need that student has. And it takes into, takes into impact, it takes into effect their iLearn scores, their iLearn growth, their iReady scores, and their iReady growth, and it creates a priority score for them. And you can have students who maybe passed iLearn but didn't grow, and maybe didn't pass iReady, and maybe did grow, and some of them that passed and didn't pass, their scores are not what you would think. There are students who pass that have a win score of an eighty or a ninety, or, you know, most of those students have not passed anything. And so it allows us to really break that down. Actually, in our next principal meeting, all those reports have been uploaded from EES, and so we can see the middle-of-the-year data with every student's win score.
I can also play something to respond to Mrs. Perry's question and Mr. Mark, to place things in a brief nutshell.
Great.
The other thing with regard to our professional learning organization and the PLO that we're establishing is that through COVID and particular matters, data and dissecting and disaggregating and mining data was a relative most practice. And so when Mr. Baker chairs, that we're getting back to the point where we are becoming data-informed, allowing the data to drive our instruction, drive our planning, and for our faculty and staff, as well as our leadership, to be comfortable with, because that's Mr. Baker's point was, it took, it took a while for folks to be comfortable with being in the room and having their data put on the projector, so as for everyone to then contribute, weigh in, and provide sound advice, scripted feedback as to how they improve upon a lot of our students that are serving. So we're getting to a point where, and we've actually come a long way to the point where we even, because forgive me, but I'm not sure if such data has even been presented to the board in as many semesters. Whereas previously, what I understand, data was something that was frequent, and so we're getting there. How would you ask as far as the, that's something that we didn't consider.
And just one, one thing to remember, the iLearn is changing. And so we're going to a new iLearn pilot next year, where there are three checkpoint assessments, then a final assessment, and then the following year, it's, it's that test again without once, one test at the end of the year like we currently take now. So next year, we'll take both of them, but then the following year, it'll go to the regular checkpoint that is being adopted for next school year. So we're going to try it. And so we'll see what that looks like.
Yeah.
What they tell us, every time we meet with them, I feel like they tell us something different or something new. And that is part of it. So I'm excited for those checkpoints, because I believe that's what it should have been all along.
Yeah.
Ready for that.
And we did, just so you all know, we did, opting in to checkpoints was optional. We opted every one of our buildings in, because with opting in came professional development around the checkpoints. So what I did as the testing coordinator was opt our buildings in, and then I did each of the professional development options so that we could cross-train one another, so that if I'm in the data analytics and another one's in the test-taking strategies, that as a corporation, we can train each other in, hey, here's what they're telling us this new test is going to look like. So the blueprints will be interesting.
Yep, so I'm going to turn this over to Mark Fowler, and we've worked, we've worked for a semester, a little over a semester with this fellow from California. And for those of you that don't know what it's like to work with him, it's like almost a dream come true. It is awesome. It is awesome. I think that the crew that we have assembled is wonderful, and working with him is a joy. Every day, I tell his brother that, and his brother's like the only person that says that, but.
Thank you. It's on record now.
But no, he's, he's awesome. So there we go.
Mr. Slasky, were you going to ask a question?
We bought into the EES platform to get extra data. Is there any, anything within there that will help us bridge the old iLearn with the new iLearn? So we have some consistency in the numbers?
Yeah, so, kind of, because the state keeps changing the terms. You know, you're proficient, you're past plus, you're above proficient, you're approaching proficient. They keep changing the terms every couple of years.
I can't wait for the state changes anyway.
Yeah, and so it's really hard, I'm really big in the quadrant, on the quadrant chart that shows student performance and student growth. And you know, I want you to be in the top right-hand corner, well, that'd be for you, the top right-hand corner of that chart, and we're in that, of those quadrants, and not in the bottom left, if I refer to that as the box of death, we don't want to be down there. But the state can't provide us that chart, because the metrics and the language has changed three times in six years, I believe. So EES is using the numbers on a scale to probably give us the best data that we can actually get. At this point, some of their data is so in-depth that I have a rough time figuring out how to read it. I actually called there today, emailed them today, and asked them to call me, because I was having trouble with a, with a a report, and their CEO called me and said, this is the type of service he provides, Dr. Wright. That's what he told me on the phone, so.
The depth and breadth of the, Luke Lanzin's, he's a character, but the EES analytic partnership, by being in partnership with, that's former state superintendent, that is her former chief second, if you will, Dr. Lanzin, CEO, is full, but these are also, EES Analytics also advise us in the Department of Education. And they are definitely on its open and in line with trying to keep up the change. They've been formed out in the, in most of the meetings we've had, things that are truly going to be rattling.
In those documents that I shared with you, the one with the dotted lines, that was from EES. That's an example of the reports that they provide that I can't get anywhere else.
It's about.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wright, trustees. I am going to invite up the Celeste Johnston. Johnson. Johnson. And so what I've asked some of the secondary leaders to do tonight is to come and how to walk us through some data. So the high school data, I don't want to say it's complicated, but there's a lot to it. In talking about this, I told Celeste just bring what we have, because we need to acknowledge where we are, and then we just have to get better, right? And so some of the data that you're going to see is not great, and I know that makes everybody nervous. But I think we have to acknowledge it for what it is, and then put together a plan to say, how do we do better? And so we're going to talk a little bit about SAT data, what that looks like, EL data at the high school, how they score that. So if you don't have a great understanding, maybe you have a better understanding after this is done. And then I also asked our secondary leaders to be ready for some questions. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Johnson, but I want to say thank you for being here tonight, because you're going to do an awesome job.
I was telling the other people back there, I've been working in Richmond Community Schools for twenty-sixty years, and this is the first time I've ever presented here. So like Mr. Fowler said, I brought a lot of data. And I think the biggest thing that you guys need to know is what data do we use and how do we use it, right? So this is our federal accountability grade. This is what we're going to talk about tonight. Part of it is the SAT test, which is the new, it is the new graduation exam. But more importantly, you guys might be familiar with the letter grades that came out. Those are gone. There are now indicators. So we're going to talk about where we are and where we need to get to, okay? So first of all, there are eleven points. Everything that I show you is not going to be about percentages, it's about points. And so we have been really successful with our graduation rate. And the reason we focused on our graduation rate, well, if you look at it, it is four times the weight as some of the others, right? So if we're looking at, there are six different bullets that we look at for our federal accountability grade worth eleven points. The graduation rate is four times the weight. The English Language Arts and the math SAT data, those are double weights, and then the others are single ones. So that probably should make sense why we focused on the graduation rate first, and now we're attacking the SAT, okay? So every, the next slides that I show you, Richmond is going to be, Richmond High School is going to be identified by the black columns with the red around it. All the indicators are the same, so at the bottom, you're going to see on the left, does not meet, expectations, approaches expectations, meets expectations, and exceeds. So again, you're looking on, on those four places, right, and then for Richmond faults. Again, these are points. Please don't assume that these are percentages. They are not percentages. Percentages make them, make them look a little bit worse, okay? So Richmond High School, when we are talking about our SAT, evidence-based reading and writing achievement, we have approached the expectation, because we are right above the forty-three point oh-two or zero-two points, right? So that's where we are there. Some things that we've done to improve this is that we have classroom libraries. We've, we've adopted a workshop model in our classrooms. And so our teachers are really, they're liking those, those new things that we're doing. So we are trying to get kids reading in the class. What that means is they get to pick the book they read. It's no longer that classroom set, we all read the same book. It's they get to pick because there's classroom libraries. Math, so again, where Richmond is based on points, Richmond is really close to meeting, to approaching the expectation in the math achievement or the SAT. So we know we have a lot of work to do here. We acknowledge that. Some of the things that we've done is we have adopted a new analytible Algebra II and II B class, and it's very relatable, it's relative, it's real world, it's about budgeting, things that kids are going to like to do. For example, after I graduate high school, what am I going to do with my money? Well, I'm going to have to live with somebody, because I'm not going to be able to afford my rent. So just real-world problems that are being introduced and discussed in that classroom. And the Algebra II and II B classes are required for the Core Forty Diploma. We'll talk about that in a minute. The graduation rate, boom, this is where we are. We have exceeded the expectation, and that's the four perth of the slides, right? Four times the weight. So the highest you can get in the graduation rate is one oh-seven point two, we are at one oh-one. We're doing excellent, and we've been doing excellent here. The strength of the diploma, so what that means is there are, there's a Core Forty Diploma, there is a technical honors, and there's a honors Core Forty. The strength of the diploma means that you have gotten a Core Forty Diploma, but you've also completed a post-secondary readiness. So kids who cannot complete a post-secondary readiness, they have to get a waiver. If you get a waiver and a Core Forty, that is. If you get a waiver and a core forty, that is not a strong diploma. So we want kids to get a core forty or higher and then have some type of post-secondary plan. Whether they've taken career tech classes at Richmond High School, they've got a C N A certification, they have a high enough score on their S A T. There's there are tons of ways to get it, but we do have kids that are unable to complete a pathway, which makes them go on to the non, the not the strong diploma. Okay, so did a lot of studying on this. Um this is our E L L um our classes here. Our students who are entering uh into Richmond High School. And what's important about this is is that I know that we're really low and we have a long ways to go, but this is growth data. These these numbers are based on growth. So I have to have a student that's been in my school for ninety percent, ninety percent of the time, a hundred and sixty-two days. I have to test one year, I have to test next year, and then I have to show the amount of growth that the state says is proficient, okay? So if you have a kid that comes in as a ninth grader and they takes the WEATA test, that's the test that we use. They are being tested at age-appropriate ninth grade levels, right? So there's all these standards that I can, all these levels that I can place into. But if I am entering into Richmond High School as a ninth grader, I have to take a ninth grade age-appropriate WEATA test, okay? Here are the six levels that we're talking about and these are where our kids are entering. Um notice where a majority of our kids are. Our kids are entering at level one and level two. To become proficient, they would have to grow enough and be in level level five. Once they reach level five, that is proficient at for the E L L. Please notice at the bottom that in uh two thousand nineteen, we had a hundred and four students. We're now at a hundred and nine or a hundred and ninety-nine. Our E L L population has grown five percent in five years. That's pretty hard. Um addressing chronic absenteeism, these numbers again are set by the the federal and state. We are approaching uh the expectation. We're doing a lot of things to improve our chronic absenteeism. For example, we're having AIM meetings. Um those are attendance of, oh my gosh, attendance uh just had it. Intervention, thank you. Attendance intervention meetings. We have a Mr. Fisher in our building. He's going to homes. He's making phone calls. We're having AIM meetings in the high school. We're having AIM meetings with probation. So we're doing all these things to kids and with their parents to make sure that they understand how important it is to be in the building.
We're also working with the local judicial entities here in Wayne County in Richmond uh that started. Last spring, um we made concerted efforts and thus far we have uh. We've enjoyed the the partnership and relationship with the goals improved. But this is also a county initiative and for state and national mission. With rest absenteeism.
So I gave you, I gave you those six indicators, right? Those six, the from the beginning, but look where we are. We have approached the expectations. Look how close we are to meeting the expectation. This is the overall rating. So we have approached, we're almost to the meeting and we're working on it. So based on what the first slide that you saw, you know that we need to work on our S A T, right? So here's some test data from Richmond High School. This is our evidence-based reading and writing. So what we have done is we want our students to be familiar with the P S A T. So that they are better prepared for the S A T. We want them to see what it looks like. So we now give the P S A T in ninth grade in the fall. We give the P S A T tenth grade in the fall. We give the P S A T eleventh grade in the fall, all in hopes that when it comes March, they are ready to take that S A T and do well on it. So they have three attempts at a practice, but then they get the big thing that's coming up um on March seventh, so it's coming up. So as you can see, um Richmond High School, sorry.
So that's so, so after they take the P S A, like when you do a practice test back in the day, you then you have all the, why you missed the question. Do, what do we do after the test?
So they get their scores and they go back to, they get them because they have their own college board account. So they get their own scores and they get this from the council or they get mailed home. Those tests, we're not doing actually with those scores, they're they're actual tests. But what we're doing is we've adopted questioning and thinking, thinking for our instructional focus. So we are actually implementing those type questions into our, all of our classrooms. I have some exciting to show you at the very end, but we are doing something with not their actual scores, but the test questions. So if you see, we have gone up, but please notice at the bottom, the state decided to change the score. So it went from a one twenty to seven sixty to a one sixty. So I know it appears that we went up from P S A T uh nine to P S A T ten, but they changed the the level. Any questions about that? Let's look at the math. In Richmond, the state and the national. And these are our kernel, eleven graders, so how they did on the ninth grade, how they did on the tenth grade, how they did on the eleventh grade. I know it down, went down just a little bit. So here's the mean score. What they're doing is they're taking their evidence-based reading and writing. They're taking their math. They're combining it. Not a lot of information there, uh but that is, that is a piece of data that I brought. So here's what's important. We talked about the ninth grade P S A T, the tenth grade P S A T, the eleventh grade P S A T. And then they take the S A T, right? This is our current seniors. This is their data. So if you notice on the evidence-based reading and writing, the proficiency scores four eighty, we got a four fifty-nine. Related to the four eighty-three for the state and four ninety. So we're doing pretty well, but more importantly, let's break it down. If you look at the top, it tells me where I've, where kids are meeting expectations or approaching the benchmarks and not approaching. So thirty-six percent of our students exceeded or met the expectation uh for the evidence-based reading, writing. Seven percent were approaching, but fifty-seven percent of our kids did not meet the evidence-based reading and writing benchmark. Notice the numbers for the state and the nation as well. There's our distribution. We had six kids get between the seven hundred, eight hundred score. That's huge. We had a hundred and twenty-one score in the four hundred to four nineties. Remember forty is proficient. So that's just a breakdown. Then let's look at our math. So proficiency is five thirty. Everyone, keep in mind at Richmond High School compared to the state and to the nation. Everybody's doing poorly on the math, okay? Not an excuse, but just if we look at everything, there, none of it's really high. Um so we're at a four thirty-seven. Let's break it down even further. I know this is ugly, but we gotta be honest here. Seventy percent met or exceeded the benchmark, six percent approached the benchmark, seventy-seven percent did not meet. It's not pretty, but we're working on it. So again, there's the distribution of the of the where they scored. This is mean score. So eight ninety-six compared to nine fifty-nine, nine sixty. What this means is how many of our students of the two hundred and ninety, how many of them met both? How many met one and how many met met none? So seventeen percent of our current seniors met both S A T benchmarks. Nineteen percent of our seniors only met one of those and sixty-four percent uh neither one of them. There's the breakdown. And so you probably wanna know what we're doing. Mr. Weber, you, I I told you I was gonna give you some good information, right? So we are starting tomorrow. We have fifteen days of jumpstart of S A T type questions. So every single day, every single kid in our building, just not our juniors, every single kid in our building is going to get an S A T type question. As as a bell ringer, okay? That's either gonna be, look like a chart of uh relative data. Or it's going to be words that are confused on the S A T. There's gonna be thinking, there's gonna be questioning, but we're giving it to everybody because not just our seniors or and our juniors need to improve. We have a whole school that needs to improve. So every single student in Richmond High School starting tomorrow is going to get an S A T type question one period a day for the next fifteen days. Until March seventh, when the S A T is actually held for our juniors. You guys have any questions to me?
And I I do wanna just kinda throw out one. Maybe initiative that we're interested in piloting at some point is. Um in the past, in some of the districts that I've been in for state testing at high school specifically. Um there is this apathy towards testing if I'm a student who maybe isn't pursuing a four-year college. Or I'm not interested, I have my job, I have maybe a C T E certificate. And shockingly enough, a lot of seventeen-year-olds aren't really aware that if they don't try on a state test, that reflects poorly on a school district. So one of the things that I have proposed to the R H S team is is to think about is. We we created an academic incentive for students in the math and English. Based on the four bands that you test, we would give you an academic grade bump of three percent, five percent, seven percent, whatever it is. Um so that there was some skin in the game for some kids who were looking maybe for a reason to really engage in it. And the S A T or for what we did was, that wasn't gonna do it. And um what we saw like right off the bat, aside from scores was. Uh that those students who were kind of on the cusp, they would take forty-five minutes per segment, it doubled. Right? Because if I'm a kid who's got like a C plus and I know if I do pretty well on this, there's a chance I can get a B minus. I I'll spend some extra time on that, right? So we're kicking around maybe how that would look and is there a way that we could just, for some students who maybe aren't going to on the natural. Do their very best. Is there a way that we could actually do that and provide an incentive? Obviously, it wouldn't hurt anyone, right? There's, if you don't do well, it doesn't take away from your grade. But what are some carrots that we could put out there for some students perhaps that maybe we could really get them to put some time, effort and energy into it? And and see what they could do.
Yeah, I, I mean, having two kids go through the process during the post, during the college. It it, I mean, the test designed, I think it was a tenth grade level. And the 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 trick is knowing how to take the test. And so we spent our time working on on, you know, they're not, they're not testing your knowledge per se. They're testing your reasoning and how you work through the questions. And so I have often said we should offer test prep classes because I think you can connect a dot with, a kid gets a better score. He gets more scholarship, his 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 college choices change, his lifetime earnings improve. I mean, it it's a, it's a fairly straight line to make all those assumptions. And so to see an emphasis on on that for all our students, but particularly for, I think, those that it, this is truly very meaningful. And can truly impact their life. I know some colleges have got away from testing, so it's it's maybe not as important as it was ten years ago.
But it is to some, right?
But but depending on where you go.
Where you go, that's right.
It can make a significant impact and so, so I appreciate the effort.
And I would also like to say just to weave N I E T into this, that that the, this initiative came out of like N I E T cluster. And how do we weave these, this S A T initiative into the instructional framework that currently exists? And so uh the R H S team came up with this and it's it's gonna be awesome.
Well, it also speaks to the systemic alignment. You all heard uh my visionary perspective uh for tier one instruction. But that systemic alignment piece, aligning our systems, aligning our arrows so that we can start to see the the growth, the gradual growth in particular areas. And with the N I E T framework instructors and the focus on data, bring it all together. Yeah, to, you have to identify and continue to dissect and address students where they are. The third, which is the social emotional supports. And I know that Mrs. Markworth, she'll try and be laid on with you, you know, by that place. Great job, Mr. Johnson.
Johnson, thank you so much.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna invite Ms. Markworth up to the podium and she's going to uh.
All right, Board of Trustees, I am now going to invite Mrs. Cassie Watermilk and Mr. Stephen Hensley to the podium. Um Cassie, Building Principal at Hibbert and Mr. Hensley, the Director of um STEAM at Hibbert. And so they're gonna share with you building goals and then some data around each of the respective programs.
Do you wanna do this part?
Sure. Uh, Lord, hi. Thank you for having us tonight. I wanna share a couple of goals that we have for building. Um first, there are two goals, growth goals and a performance goal. I think it's important to delineate between growth and performance. Growth, as we know, can be pretty unlimited for kids who are really, really, really three grade levels or more below. They have, they have higher growth. They can grow more. Their growth gets more complicated, the higher you get, the higher performing you are, that growth gets more complicated. It gets harder. The ceiling gets a little closer and it's a little bit harder to get those growth points. So we have two goals for the building. Um sorry, my my eyes are so bad, I cannot read them screen, so I'll forget here. Uh we want seventy-five percent of our kiddos to reach their annual typical growth, which is that year's worth of growth. Um on their uh diagnostic data for I ready for math. Uh we also would like fifty percent of our kiddos to reach their stretch growth on their I ready diagnostic. We felt that was a pretty fair growth in um performance goal um for stretch growth. For performance, we would like our kiddos to get seventy-five percent uh proficiency as measured by the I learn. So we're kind of, we're trying to connect our growth goals on I ready and our performance goals to I learn. And looking at those projections like Mr. Baker showed you earlier. And then I think this will echo what Celeste shared earlier, but we are looking at a writing goal for the building. And we take it to like an evidence-based reading and an evidence-based writing, looking at how we can weave those into tier one instruction to ultimately raise the bar for our kids. Because we know that we can raise raise better readers, we know that really benefits them in the long term.
All right, so this is a little bit elementary to look at, but um I wanted to start with our applied skills program. Because we include, increased by one classroom this year. We have three with a total of twenty-eight students. Uh we do have fourteen staff members who work back in our applied skill suite, which is my favorite place to visit. Um whenever I'm frazzled, I go back there because there's no pressure. So um the, each one of the classrooms cooks one day a week. And so I kinda put some of their stats on here because we're looking for such individual growth for these students. But it's hard to measure how many kids are reading, you know, so many adult side words or whatever. So I wanted to talk about life skills that they're learning. So they have cooked um once a week for each of the three classes, so they've prepared over ninety meals this year or snacks. And we have students who are terrified of the stove at the beginning of the year. And now we're getting them special oven vents and they're able to do um some of the meal prep and the cooking. So that's amazing. Uh community outings, so far they've gone on sixteen outings. Today they went to Richmond Square Mall and did a scavenger hunt. I don't know what it was. I didn't make it there inside. Last week they went swimming at Earlham. I don't know if you follow Midi or some of these pages. But they went swimming. It was amazing. They've gone to Bright Pat. They've gone to the arcade. Lots of opportunities for them to interact with uh businesses, to spend money, to count change, to make sure that they are able to buy a ticket. Uh order food in a restaurant. They went to Elrondale. I got to go to that one. Um but we are utilizing those buses, so um they are out every Wednesday and they would love for you to show up sometime. If you ever, you know, wanna know where they're going, it is on our newsletter and I can always send it out. And then they've spent over forty hours in the community this year and that is especially um important for applied skills students. Who at some point will not have the safety net of school to help them on those outings and and to navigate the community. So we teach them lots of things before they go on. And you can see our kiddos um who went to Earlham, some of them decided they wanted to do the swim test and go into the deep end. And a lot of them stayed um back in the in the shallow end. And then our buddy Trenton right there on our three-wheeled bicy- bicycle, they are out and about in the building. And you'll hear squeak, 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 because I hear their little uh bike go by the uh the front door. Okay, so if you are familiar with high ability learners, you will know that um their ability to grow and to reach. Uh to to grow as much is different from the learners that we see typical H P ers. So they may not, if they're already here, then going to, you know, a little bit higher is harder for them to inch up. And so their growth doesn't look as big as some of our other other learners, not to make excuses for any of our data, because our data is wonderful. But when you see these um, these percentages like thirteen percent, eleven percent, those are students that may have already maxed out. May have already topped out on our I ready platform. We do have kids who have maxed out scores. So um our third graders, these are kids who are in other buildings, uh second graders. And so they've come to us and they may have gotten, you know, their first taste of um an accelerated curriculum. And so we're glad to see that they're making a lot of growth and meeting very, almost half in our third. And our fourth grade is looking, looking great. Um but as they get older, you know, we're talking about those kids that have already kinda maxed out. And so you may not see the same type of growth. With our math data, so I ready was new to it or ready math was new to us last year. And so um our math growth does not look as wonderful. And we are having data meetings to discuss what, how are our students grouped? Are we needing to get at um specific students who, obviously we do, uh need to get into some small groups and to work with students. And we also know that they go from ready math in uh third and fourth grade and they jump to C P M as fifth graders. And so there is a gap there where we are trying to figure out um how to teach some fifth grade and sixth grade math in the same year. And that's a conversation that I think we're having um with alignment. And then um this is just kind of what's going on in Logos right now. We have uh two teachers who are, who have been invited to be part of national research projects. And so we have fifty-three students who are participating. Mr. Schreier, actually, we have three things going on, but Mr. Schreier has seventeen students who have taken part in a Hummingbird drone. Uh, research project through the Educational Research Center in Boston. And Ms. Washington is going through the same place to do biomimicry. And those teachers, Mr. Schreier is also going to Texas. So on the twenty-eighth, Washington's going to Boston for the the Biomimicry Symposium. And then Mr. Schreier is going to Texas to be a part of a um, uh, food, I forget what it's called. Um, but he is part of a, he was invited to come and be part of a Nourish the Future um, grow food growth thing. So we have lots of students who will be participating in those in nationwide research and we get stuff. So we get the Hummingbird robots, we get the biomimicry drones and stuff. Um, we've had six guest speakers come in to talk to Logos, a lot of those come to Natalie Wise's class. I know um, Ms. Franklin was there for one event that took place. And then we have lots of people who come in to work with our students. Uh, Jody Marcy came in and she did a presentation on plants. Um, our students have taken a total fourteen field trips in Logos and you can see our aeroponics right there. So we have made eight donations to Gleaner's Food Bank. And um, we keep half of the food that we grow for from our aeroponic units and half of that goes to the food bank. So we've been able to um, provide fresh food to our to our local community. And we are just about to start rowing, Mr. Schreier grew jalapenos for some reason, um, strawberries and cucumbers and tomatoes. So that's new because we have my attachments that go with our aeroponic units. And then just, you know, that Logos, the the cornerstone of Logos is Passion Projects, and so we've had two hundred and six of those presented on this year. Questions for the Logos side of things or the applied skill side of things?
Okay, hello again. Uh, I need to present some data on the STEAM Academy. We know it's brand new, it's kind of a pilot year, we have been very, very busy, so I do want to present to you the data. We have some really strong areas, we have a couple of areas we're we're looking at. So what you have in front of you is uh, we're a poor group, we're grade five, six, seven and eight in math. This is the growth data from August to December. Um, if you want, there is that progress median column, which just tells us that in the whole class, if a kid had three thousand percent growth down to zero, the median number would be, look at the middle. I like that percent met category, it's right beside it. We see that in grade five, there are twenty-two percent who met their typical growth for the year. So we are in December, so in that one semester, our twenty or twenty-two percent, a fifth of our kids already met their typical growth for the year. Um, and that number increases in sixth grade to thirty-two percent. Our seventh graders, I don't know what they're getting at lunch, but we're at fifty-two percent who have met their typical growth, which is a very large number for seventh grade. And really strong eighth grade as well, forty-eight percent who met their typical growth. And a little more excitingly, we look over two more columns in that stretch growth, which is that growth for kiddos who might be two or more grade levels below, that multi-year path proficiency. That represents that those that stretch growth is what we're looking for, we need it, has to happen. Um, fifth grade is where we're seeing the weakest growth in math. So we have to take some, we've already spent a lot of time putting additional adult support in those rooms, rethinking tier one, looking at small groups, how we run the classroom. We've had a lot of conversations around that, so I think we've had some really solid work happen there. Um, sixth grade math, uh, we have fourteen percent who met their stretch and ten percent in grade seven and eight percent or thirteen percent in grade eight. So that is our math data. Remember, we have a hundred and twenty-seven kiddos in the STEAM Academy right now. So the numbers are pretty strong and they um, each kid matters, the percentages are there. I'm gonna go to this slide, it's the math data. I want to show you where like, it's really powerful to watch it on the analytics side of things. If you look at grade six and that black arrow, you'll see from August to December, we want to get that red out of there. We want it to transition to yellow and green. In sixth grade, we have no students that are one, two or more grade levels below. We have some students, fifty-nine percent, might be a grade level below, but we got that five percent that was red. Our tier one interventions, our tier two interventions are working, we're getting that red, they're growing, we're moving up the category system. And we see that happen, especially in grade six, and we also have it in grade eight. And I don't know what's going on in grade eight either, I know our teachers are out there and they are hitting the pavement hard and they're doing the thing every day. So we saw our percentages dramatically reduce, especially if you look at grade eight math. The kids who are three or more grade levels below dropped from twenty-two percent down to nine percent. And that's in one semester, we have a whole other semester to go. And our goal is to really get all those kids that are in the red into the yellow and green because we know that in a multi-year path to proficiency, we have to do it. So we're really proud of our math data, but we have some work to do, especially in grade five. Um, our ELA data is looking super, super, super strong. Um, grades five through eight, no one's more typical growth. Every single class grade level is forty percent or higher, but met their typical growth for the year. So that's a really big number when we're at December. We are really excited that, you know, if one if one semester got forty, will the second semester get us to eighty? I don't know, I'm kind of curious if that's the, when we get to eighty, I'd be thrilled. My goal, remember, was seventy-five percent who got their growth, so that's what we're shooting for. Ideally, one hundred percent is the goal, but we'll we will make strides. Um, I want to show, I want to shout out our ELA teacher, grade eight, for our stretch growth. We have thirty-five percent of our eighth grade class have met their typical stretch or the stretch growth of the year. That again is a huge, huge number, we're really proud, um, they're working really, really hard. And we see sixty-one percent of those kids, and remember those that eighth grade group, they were bumped multiple buildings and reconfiguration, they experienced COVID. They've had a pretty rough go of it, but sixty-one percent have, they've improved their placement. That's what we need to happen. So it tells me that our tier two interventions, which we built in the TSS for academics and behavior, those what we defined it, what it looks like, it's working. It needs to be improved, it's going to be, it's a constant improvement, but that's, it's working for us. So again, same thing we see in sixth grade for ELA data, for performance, or this is not growth, it's performance. It's where they're taking the diagnostic, it's where they're performing, if they're on grade level or not. Because you could be on, you could be three grade levels below and grow up thirty points and still be two grade levels below. So we're looking at kids who are performing on or not on grade level. So we see that in sixth grade, we have no students that are performing uh, two or more grade levels below. We have forty-five percent who are performing um, one grade level below. But essentially what we did is that nineteen percent that were two or more below, we moved those up into the yellow category. And we see that kind of mimicked also in the eighth grade. So we're really proud of this data, again, fifth grade is where we've, we have the most work to do. And I think that's because it's transition, the transition from elementary setting into a secondary setting. That's always been hard historically, I think, for the district, so we kind of see that happen, so we spend more time there with our kids. Um, I do want to speak to some of our disciplinary data. Um, you will know that if you look at the first part on the top right, our disciplinary data increased from September and November kind of high. Um, so one of the things that I chose to do is, we were looking at like, when are we getting the referrals roll in? And you'll see this a minute, Thursdays in the afternoon, I don't know what's going on, but Thursday afternoon kids are maxed out, their bandwidth is zero, we see the referrals coming. So now I tend to do all my walkthroughs and observations during those times. I make sure I'm physically present in the hallways, in those rooms, so they see me. Um, that's just an example of one thing we did to address proximity with presence. I am physically there, they see me and Mrs. Loudermilk all the time. So Thursdays, we know it's a high day. And then we know it's after lunch, twelve-thirty or later, majority of referrals roll in and it's majority fifth grade. So you can see how the behavior piece is linked to the academic performance piece. We see the majority of our referrals are in grade five. So we spend a lot of time working with our grade five students on expectations, appropriate behavior, what to do, what not to do and how to respond to situations, especially social conflict on Valentine's Day. Hard break, it was a lot today.
And now we can have algebra recess, now this is helping.
Yes, the pressure is not hurting. Pressure is not hurting. So I do remind everybody that this is a gen ed program, it's not um, high ability or not high ability, it's a general education. Um, twenty percent of our population, nineteen percent have an NIET, broken down by grade level there for you. Uh, six percent have a five oh four. And here's why I want to speak to them, I'm really proud of our kids and our parents and families for doing this. Our attendance data is ninety-four percent with three as the average as of last Friday. That is awesome, we have to have our kids here to give them services, to provide education. So we, I just shout out our families, our parents, guardians, whoever's at home, take it, bring them to school, the transportation people. With them not, if they were not at school, we could provide them service. So I can't reiterate enough how important the attendance piece is, kids not here, we can't help them. So if you have questions, feel free to ask, without Mr. Fatt.
I I just want to say on the discipline thing, I want to um, say two things. One is the Swiss data is so helpful. Um, those charts where we can actually track when discipline's happening, at what time and in what classroom. Is so helpful because it gives you such a clear picture of, well, something needs to happen here, right? And that could either be how we schedule things, who we put there, it's just that Swiss data is so helpful in that. The second thing I want to say is um, I I want to commend Mr. Hensley in front of the Board of Trustees for for the discipline. Um, model in TSS that he has provided. Because as you know, we came into this year not really knowing that discipline may or may not look like in a STEAM Academy. It's a a gen ed program, it's in a building where some of the behaviors that we see didn't traditionally exist. And so he and I spent a lot of time on the phone together figuring out, we need to put systems of support in place. So that these students can can achieve and and Mr. Hensley's done a wonderful job of that. Um, and just making sure that our students know they belong there and that we've supported them along the way. So I just wanted to say thanks for that because that has been built throughout the year.
Yeah.
And in addition, just again, introducing a brand new program, new initiative into a building that has successfully been successful with other programs. Um, because again, kudos, because such a initiative, such a transition, um, typically you wouldn't sort of find such such supportive data. But with the leadership and the fabulous staff there here.
Well, so relevant to this board, just one of the fifth graders, he had your answer.
I will say, we had a student lose his cell phone in the fifth grade.
Oh.
And we spent a lot of time finding, we found that phone. We Thursday, we found it.
That's right, I remember that, yeah, it is.
Lots of, lots of.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hensley. So I'm gonna use brevity in these next two, um, but I do want to acknowledge, um, and Ms. Hobbs is not here, but I wanted to acknowledge our CYS Baxter site. Um, I have a slide in here uh, for the Baxter Wardley students, ninth through twelfth grade. In the first semester, there were ninety-six total credits earned. The reason that's so important, or these are students who were not for the most part earning them where they came from, right? And they were there because they weren't doing that. And what Ms. Hobbs has done in that building is amazing. Um, I I go by there from time to time for our bi-weekly check-ins and we walk the building together. She knows every single kid by name, she knows every single student's story. And it has allowed her to steer that ship in a way that is unbelievable. It is amazing. Um, the other thing that she is super, super prideful about is we don't want students to stay here, right? Our job is to get them, right the ship academically, if it's a behavioral issue, how do we provide interventions? How do we reset? And we want them back. And so Baxter sent fourteen students back to their homeschool at the semester um, who are doing well. And so she's not here to provide data and some of the data there looks different, right? But I did want to take time to acknowledge the job that she has done in transforming CYS and Baxter into a school where kids go to learn. Um, and it's been amazing.
If she were here, she'd invite each and every one of you to come by tomorrow, or whenever you have an opportunity to see Baxter. And if uh, those of you that saw Baxter a few years ago, you can see it now, night and day, the difference, night and day. And to uh, Mr. Fowler's point, school occurs, it happens, teaching, learning.
And kids walk into the school expecting that they're gonna learn.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, I just fell out of my chair when I heard it.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. uh, Lawson and Ms. Cooper couldn't be here for Dennis Middle School, so I'm I'm gonna go through a little bit of data. And I want to talk a little bit about what Stephen said, what what you need to know about Dennis's data is this, thank you, Ms. Loudermilk. Dennis students have a ton of room to grow, so I want to just acknowledge that. Um, academically, uh, we need to focus a lot of time, effort and attention there. So what you're gonna see is iReady math here in this first slide. Um, so grade seven, sixty-two percent of the students have already met um, their their median progress for the year in the first semester. And forty-one percent total seventh graders have met their typical growth for the year. That seems great. But let's remember, uh, a lot of those students, and I'm not saying this is good, bad or whatever, I want to be honest and transparent in this. Most of those students are two grade levels or below, so their typical growth metric is lower. So they're gonna meet that sooner, all right? So forty-one percent have already met their typical growth. And that is because of where they started. Now that's to celebrate, but they've started two grade levels or below. Um, for their stretch growth, twenty-four percent of seventh graders have met it for this year. I'm sorry, the semester, sixteen percent have met their stretch growth for the year. That make sense? So twenty-four have met where they're supposed to be, sixteen percent are where they should be for the whole year. Grade eight, thirty-three percent have met their annual typical growth for the year and or the semester. Thirty-four percent of the students have met it for the entire year. And then again, you'll see eighth grade uh, with math, fourteen percent have met their stretch growth as of where they should be. Um, or thirteen percent where they should be and fourteen for the year.
So that last column there, the forty-eight percent of seventh graders, is that the replacement meaning they've already moved the.
They've, yes, they've they've increased a grade level. And and I, what I, and and we'll see it in some of the other slides. What is actually impressive about this is the behind the scenes work that's gonna lead to the next two, three years, the growth we see in math. I think this is the tip of the iceberg and we're seeing some gains, but we'll show some data about behavior and things like that that I think is going to skyrocket this number.
Especially with vertical articulation, because then therefore RHS is in a matter of time, more than caprice because of the.
So here's reading, um, so grade seven, uh, ten percent have met their median growth um, for the semester. Thirty-seven percent met it for the entire year. Grade eight, eighty-nine percent have met the median typical growth, forty-nine percent have met it for the year. And then the stretch growth, you'll see fifteen percent have met it for the year in seventh grade, twenty-one percent in eighth grade. And then again, you'll see number of students in replacement, thirty-five percent and forty-eight percent. And I just want to remind us, those look great. But we have a lot of work to do at Dennis because we want those students in the next couple of years coming in. With the data that Stephen was showing, where at worst, they're one grade level below. Now, your your metrics for progress decrease, right? And your stretch growth numbers decrease, but most of that is due to kids being on grade level. Okay, um. This this is what I think is going to lead to continued academic growth. I'm a firm believer that kids won't learn unless they feel safe. Um, I think kids who aren't sure what's gonna happen when they walk out in the hallway, they turn that part of their brain off that learns and they turn on the part that survives. And what Dennis has done as an administrative team with their deans and their counselors is they have changed a culture of expectations for kids. I actually ran into a a lady today who used to be a sub secretary at Dennis. I saw her in the main office and she said, you know, what's your job, what do you do? And I told her and she said, I have to tell you something. This is not the same school that it was even a year ago. She goes, I I come here, I I take the calls from the parents, I, what's happening here is unbelievable. And while I don't know that our data for student achievement would say that this year. I think what they are doing there is laying the groundwork so that the sky is the limit there. And so what you'll see is uh, Dennis focused on the why of student behaviors and creating environment that is safe with high expectations and accountability. So what you see there is the discipline data. Um, that's something that we track in Swiss, that's something that Ms. Cooper, myself, Ms. Lawson, Mr. Grossman talk about weekly. What type of behaviors are you seeing, what are we doing about it, what does Swiss data tell us? They've taken all of that to heart. Um, and so what you'll see is when you walk the hallways there, um, I was in a hallway the other day where there was uh, the adults had just left. And I thought, oh, this may get sideways, every single kid, soon as the bell rang, right into class. And so um, they have laid the foundation for a very, very successful transfer from test, from sixth to seventh grade to the high school from eighth to ninth grade. Um, and they deserve to be recognized for that. The second part of that is kids are showing up to school. Uh, when we had our January fifth PD, um, and Mr. Baker and his trophy, um, it was the first annual. And uh, we were getting ready to announce you have the highest attendance and you could hear almost everyone in the crowd saying different schools. And when we announced that it was Dennis, everybody cheered, everybody was excited for them. And I think part of a safe school is kids showing up to a safe school, right? Kids showing up to a safe school, learning. Right? Kids showing up to a safe school, learning, the kids learning in classrooms and in, uh, improved test scores. So, um, it's just been, um, remarkable actually to watch it and experience it, um, with that team. Um, so we've put some growth initiatives in place at Dennis. Um, NIET has been a huge part of that and I'm gonna tell you why. There's, um, a lot of teachers there that have little to no experience, um, at Dennis. And so providing an instructional framework to them is probably, um, more foundational than any other building, um, because these teachers need to know what does a class look like? How should I engage a kid this way? And so, um, English teachers have been, um, doing Smecken's training, um, which is instructional strategies in English classes. Um, we allow the math and English department, departments one day out of class with, excuse me, NIET and instructional coaches to align their coursework, uh, seventh and eighth grade math, seventh and eighth grade English. So that what they taught in seventh grade translated to eighth. Um, science teachers are implementing their new curri- uh, curriculum. And we're including science labs. And, and part of what the push is for Dennis is we want the most rich experience period for our kids there. Um, behavior's coming along, attendance is outstanding. Now, how do we provide a broad and rich curriculum? So that when they go to the high school, it's not the first time they're experiencing science labs. It's not the first time they're experiencing these single subject electives, but that we've exposed them, uh, to those things. So, um, it's been, there's a lot of work to do there, so don't move back in this. Uh, there's a lot of positive things. But, but in terms of academic baseline, we have to get, uh, much, much better. And I do believe NIET and the work they're doing with our new teachers is being transformative.
Questions back there?
I've just got a comment. I've been there a couple of times here. It's just, it's amazing to see the, the vibe of the aura going on there. Uh, not just the signage and the decor through there, but just, it's an excitement. Pretty wild.
And kids are showing up, right? It's great.
I've, I've been there several times during passing periods and the kids have been great. And I mean, it's just, it's really something to be proud of.
I agree. And, uh, Ms. Cooper and Ms. Lawson and Mr. Grossman and Mr. Moore, they deserve, and her teacher, man, they just deserve the credit for digging in there and, and doing an awesome job. Next up, I would like to introduce Ms. Jessica Creach is the instructional coach at Test Intermediate. Um, thank you for being here. She's gonna walk us through some of the test, uh, intermediate.
Hi, um, thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about our data. I am the instructional coach at Test, but I'm also a parent of two RHS, um, uh, or RCS students, one at Iverd and one at High School. So, um, doubly happy to be here to talk about how we're doing. So, um, you've seen a lot of the iReady data, um, you're probably getting pretty familiar with it now at this point. Um, so our reading data looks, uh, pretty amazing. But when you look at those numbers, you kind of have to ask yourself, uh, some, I don't want to diminish any of the work that the, the, the teachers and the students are doing. Um, but we think possibly what's going on here was it's, it's also the first time that they took, so Au- August would have been the first time they took the iReady diagnostic for reading. Um, and so there may be just that they, that they weren't really very familiar, even though they had done, um, that's kind of the beauty of iReady is that, that math and reading gear one another. So, um, they were a year into doing iReady diagnostics for math. August would have been the first time they took an iReady, um, diagnostic for reading. There may be some, uh, test, um, experience playing into those numbers as well, but, but we'll take it. Um, so, uh, but, but we are cautious, um, because when you look at that, a hundred and eight percent, um, uh, students making their, their median progress. Um, fifty-two percent in sixth grade have achieved their, their long-term year goal. Um, in fifth grade, it's forty-nine percent. Those, we're really proud of those numbers, still cautious. Um, you know, we're not, we haven't, we haven't stopped. We're, we're, we're pushing on, um, and, and you know, it's important to understand what this too. We have the iReady math curriculum. We do not have the iReady reading curriculum. Um, so, so that makes it really kind of apples to oranges because when I show you the, the math numbers, it's, it's important to keep in mind that the students are taking the iReady math diagnostic. They are also learning along with the iReady math curriculum. That is not happening in being, have the iReady reading curriculum. We're still working with the Fontas and Pennell, um, uh, reading curriculum that we adopted a few years ago. Um, so our numbers, um, and reading are fantastic, but we are cautious. Um, and then if we look at our, um, reading placement, um, you're gonna see that from, let's go, I guess I could look here. Um, so from fifth to fifth grade, we decreased the number of students that were, um, three levels or more behind. Um, we increased in fifth grade just a little bit of that level, the green. So you see the green getting a little bit larger, the yellow getting a little bit larger, the red getting a little bit smaller. Um, not quite the growth that we wanted to see in sixth grade happening, but, um, still a little bit less of the three or more years behind, a little bit more of the green. So, um, we need to increase that yellow. Um, so that's given us some, some things to work on for the semester. Um, so now math, a little bit different. Um, uh, we've got twenty-six percent of our fifth graders have met their year growth and thirty-one percent of our sixth graders have met their year growth. Um, so there's been a, a lot of conversation about why our math scores are, are, are so different in contrast to our reading scores. Um, but again, you, it feels sort of like a common theme through NIET as professional development that gives us, um, a vehicle to not only push for instant, push for things to happen in, in the, in the school building, but also look at, um, why things are happening. And so, um, that's, that's something that we've been talking about in our ILT meetings as the leadership team and then with all, also with teachers and cluster.
Yes, so again, I apologize as Mr. Creach, uh, what you're referencing there, again, systemic alignment, that intentionality. Data, where you can drive with the information, points, bases, as to where you wanna go, be strategic and we're seeing the results.
I'd love to build on what you said earlier in the meeting where you take, um, haphazard best practices and pull those together. Um, the teachers were, uh, uh, the buy-in was a bit slow. But, um, when I think now at this point, they see it as a strengths-based, uh, framework. And so they appreciate that. And it's been almost two years and it's, NIET always says it's never a, I've got you. It's always a, I've got you. And so that's really done a lot to change our culture. Um, so at math, um, it's kind of strange how the, we, we thought it was interesting about, um, how fifth and sixth grade and August were really, uh, kind of, there was a lot of similarities. Um, had a lot more sixth graders, um, below, three or more grade levels below. And then in December, um, we, sixth grade, well, we grew the, grew the green a little bit. Um, fifth grade did a nice job. Um, and we'll just, we just continue to just do the math, iReady curriculum with fidelity. Um, and give those opportunities to math. The, the iReady math curriculum, um, focuses a lot on, um, discourse of, um, coming at problems from multiple ways and, and talking about why you still get the right answer. Um, so you can draw a picture, you can do, use your different strategies and you still get the right answer. And so, um, a lot of what they're doing in math falls back on, uh, social skills. And so they have to have social skills for, to really have the full benefit of this math curriculum. It's very important. And so, um, we are, we're doing a lot to try to build it and I'll talk in a, in a, in a few slides. Um, we're doing a lot to try to help build those social skills because it is very important in that curriculum. And when we first started last year, it was very obvious that they didn't know how to talk to one another about what they were learning or disagree with one another about, um, you know, how you got an answer, my way is the better way. I don't know why you did it that way, you know? Um, so we have, um, we've put in a lot of supports to help. Last year, we focused through cluster, um, a lot with academic conversation, peer-to-peer academic conversation. Because we knew, we recognized right away that they needed to be able to talk to one another. Um, this curriculum, uh, is built on that. So, um, we've got, we had had a lot of incentives for, um, kids to do peer-to-peer conversation, peer-to-peer, um, reflection. And we just continue to plug away with that. Um, so this speaks to our disciplinary, um, the disciplinary, our, well, this Swiss data. Um, and you can see at the bottom, the years, and we just, uh, we are writing fewer referrals. And I attribute that to our, um, trust-based relational intervention, TBRI. So we began being trained in TBRI. Really, the conversation started last year. There was a lot of information that was given to me and then I shared that with teachers um, that really focused on the root of the behavior and not punishment. Um, not that we don't want to provide students with consequences, but, um, uh, more of a support and an understanding of why they are showing us that behavior that they're showing. And we started in the summer, um, training teachers in TBRI. And we've continued, we just had a, um, a consultation with our TBRI person yesterday. So we've continued with that support. Um, and I, when I'm in conversations with teachers at school, I, I hear teachers say, you know, I think about things different now. You know, um, you ten, ten, twelve, fifteen years ago, I would write a kid up because they didn't have a pencil. I guess the tenth time they've come to my class with no pencil. I'm gonna write you up and send you to, and, and we don't do that. We just give them a pencil. You know, just give them a pencil. And, and, and it, it, it really is, um, it's really a different way of, of seeing things. And I've talked with teachers and they're like, I, I, I just kind of, I see things differently. And I think you can see that in our data with our referral.
Ms. Creach, just to add to that, what you're referencing is a regulated mind. When our educators are regulated and they're able to, they cotton maybe, uh, cotton with their approach, then we see that flourish.
Absolutely. That came up in the consultation meeting yesterday, the one that I went to. Um, the teachers appreciated that. Um, there is a culture now where a teacher can go to their principal and say, if I am dysregulated, I need a moment. Whereas when I started teaching in two thousand and five, um, whether or not that would have been understood, I'm not sure. But the, the idea was it would not have been, right? Cause you were the grown-up. And so you keep yourself together and you teach the kids. Um, now, the teachers that I was in the meeting with pointed out that they feel that it's okay. It's all right to say, cause everyone knows that teaching is hard and you do it from your heart and you're passionate about it. And so it's okay to say, ready, moment. And I, I think that that is a part of changing our culture and I really attribute a lot of that to our TBRI training.
And with such change in order and planning, we're seeing it academically and, uh, some of your, some of our other counterparts and colleagues presented to our board uh, during our last, uh, board meeting regarding TBRI and the success that they were having and experiencing and witnessing. And again, the board, we appreciate you all entrusting us with such a mission because that was a, an initiative that was board-approved last spring, if I'm not mistaken. And also we'd like to thank, uh, those community partners, uh, and with United Way and, and others, Mrs. Breitland and many others that, that poured into the TBRI experience to make it so that we can see these type of results.
And ultimately, we want to teach the kids that come to school with us every day that they can regulate themselves. Like that's the end goal. The end goal is that they learn to regulate themselves so that they can grow up to be better human beings. And so, um, I think that a lot of us see that more as, as our purpose and we have the tools that we can help make that happen. Um, this sheet is something, um, I'm really proud of the work that we do from this sheet. This is our MTSS, um, this, it's just a snip of one teacher's class. And I think this is something that you probably don't get to see. This is very, very, um, school-specific. Um, all of our schools, um, uh, all of our elementary schools test, we all have, we all keep, um, these data sheets. Um, actually, elementary school, they measure, they measure a lot more than me. Theirs goes on and on and on. We are looking at one class, I've, I've taken out all of the names. We color code our kids. This happens from before school starts as we are rostering our students. We are looking at, um, the blue, uh, are students that are in RTI or in TSS, um, multi-tier system of support is, is in TSS. It used to be called RTI response to intervention. I interchange them because sometimes with certain people, if you say MTSS, they don't know what you're talking about. Um, so you'll see over, um, the blue column or the blue color, color code is a student that is in, um, some sort of intervention. Um, the green are our ELL learners and we put down their read a spore. So the teacher has that right at their fingertips. Um, then we have all of our students with IDPs. And there are a few that we have that are highlighted in purple, not on this example, but those would be our, um, learners that are identified as, um, high ability. And so then on over in our RTI columns, um, you can see that we're keeping track of who's in, um, a tier two for reading or math, a tier three for reading or math. And then this particular class doesn't have anyone that's been, um, an intro, that is an intervention for behavior. But that column serves that purpose as well. So if the, if the student has a behavior intervention plan, like a check-in to a couch sheet, then we're gonna track that over there. Um, you can see their, uh, FPC benchmark. Um, in the beginning of the year, it was required to do the benchmark. The middle of the year was as needed. So if that teacher was worried about a, a kid, they were gonna give it in the middle of the year. And then we've got our iReady spores and those are in individual that we can look at. So, um, this, uh, is a document that just is, uh, it gets at your fingertips. Um, and we start building these from, from day one. And you'll see how busy our teachers are because the one, two, three, the columns that, the, the cells that are not color-coded, those are the kids that are not receiving intervention. They are not an ELL student and they do not have an IEP. And you'll see that this teacher has four, I believe. So tough class, it's tough to be a teacher. Um, now, the next slide, um, if you are a student that is receiving an intervention, tier one, um, tier two or tier three, math or reading, and I apologize for the awkwardness of this slide, I don't love it. But I wanted you to see, um, this starts, Melissa, first grade kindergarten? Kindergarten. This starts in kindergarten. And the beauty of this is that it is now, we, we were working with two separate RTI or MTSS data sheets. There was an older one. I have retired the older one. They all look like this now. So they all come from the elementary schools. If they are in intervention, there, we have kids that their intervention sheets could go back to kindergarten. And you'll see the tabs at the bottom. It could be second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. Most of ours start at second, at second grade, that may be when we kind of started this process. Um, so the student's name goes up there, you're gonna see where we track. We have meetings every six, uh, I, I try to do our meetings about every six weeks to talk about the interventions and how they're, what are we doing, what's working, what's not working. Um, the notes column is fantastic. Um, the notes column is fantastic. I always encourage my, my teachers to read the notes from the elementary schools because you guys are awesome at giving us. I mean, we can literally see, I saw, um, I was subbing back in the fall for twelve weeks and I was looking at one of my students' um, notes in her intervention sheet. And I saw that her, it's not in her C one, but it says her mom died at Christmas time. There was, there's no other way that I could know that. And it was just a little blurb, like, like a little blurb, like mom died at, at Christmas and wow, so that was in third grade. So then I am able to, to understand this child. We get um, this, this, this trail um, that we can track. And, and this is all of the data that we track, the I ready, the progress monitoring. Um, we're using, classroom teachers are using I ready data to um, progress monitor. The interventionists also report on this sheet and they're using their own, um, we have different intervention materials that they use and they track that as well. But we're gonna talk about this for every student in a tier two or a tier three, about every six weeks. Sometimes it goes to seven, um, if we've got something um, going on, testing or whatever that makes us kind of have to rearrange the schedule. But I thought that it was really important for you guys to see. Um, so what are the supports for those kids that are behind and are not at grade level? What are we doing? Um, so this is how this drives our, our intervention. I thought that was really important. Um, M T S S totals, you see there are fifth grade totals, our sixth grade totals, um. This was actually an aha moment for me because I hadn't pulled this together until I was getting ready for this meeting. And so now I'm wondering why our totals, I don't have an answer for why our totals in fifth grade are so much higher than our totals in sixth grade. So I'm gonna go back and try to dig into that because I literally just learned that. Um, so I keep the, the, I keep the totals, but I hadn't totaled totals and, and compared the fifth to the sixth grade.
I can't over swear, I don't. That's when, if a student is put on the M T S S, but they're put on tiers, then that automatically, like we have percentages, like we make sure if we're at over twenty percent of grade levels and things like that. But test gets all of those kids from all the elementaries. So they get a, like a big influx of kids that are in different tiers that they have to be able to work through the tiers and figure out which kids they can actually be able to service. And so as they start tearing out, we're getting back to tier one, then the numbers start to go down. But here, but they get a big influx of, of, of it.
They do. And we did, actually, we did dismiss a lot of sixth graders, especially from reading, because you saw our reading scores. So uh, when we met in January, a lot of sixth graders were dismissed from tier, from a tier two, who went back to tier one in reading because they grew so much in, in, in I ready. And we just, and we want to get them back into the classroom. In the classroom, we have tiger time that's going on and so that, that hits them in their sweet spot, right? Where they need the instruction. It's um, often individualized instruction or at the very least small group instruction. So we want to get them back to tier one so that they can have that tiger time.
And, and Miss Breach, I apologize. One of the things that for the millions of spectators watching from around the world, that will be, uh, to me then, these folks have heard me say quality tier one instruction and they think, curious, that's an okay, what does that mean? Classroom teacher. If I'm assigned to Mr. Walton's class as a student, Mr. Walton is my primary educator. If I are a student that, that have particular needs academically, that needs additional supports, I then have a tier two support that I see in Mr. Vega. If I'm still showing particular data and results that are not as of far, I may need a tier three support. I may have to then uh, intervene with Mr. Fowler. The goal is to eventually as a student, if leave my tier one instructor, my classroom teacher, because my skill sets at tier three and tier two have improved, to make it so that again, the classroom tier one instruction uh, is primary instruction.
Yeah, that's our, our primary focus is to make sure that our tier one instruction is, is solid.
And so you, when you say that you all have been able to move students from tier two to tier one, that means that students' skill sets are shrinking. And their skill sets are shrinking to the point where now that you're one instruction.
I hope that's what it is and I'm gonna go with that. Have to go take it back and check that out. And I think, oh, last slide, um, N I E T, um, we've had some goals to incre- and improve um, quality of instruction, increase student achievement. Um, our, our, the cycle that we're in right now is, has focused on pacing and um, lesson structure and pacing activities and materials. Um, we are scheduling adjustments, um, we did, we've um, got a new principal, got a little bit of a, some schedule adjustments. We have now, now have ninety minute reading blocks. Um, the math teachers teach math for sixty minutes and then they have what we call tiger time, which is thirty minutes of the, the thirty minutes that I was talking about where a student's gonna get either individualized or small group instruction. And if you'd like to check out the um, I learn countdown calendar, we've put a lot of work into that. Um, we actually historically have done an I learn countdown calendar, but we tweaked it up. And um, those lessons are coming from Smarter Balanced, which is the D O E's, um, it's the D O E's vehicle for helping teachers improve their students' I P's force. So if you'd like to look at that, you've got a link for that as well. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
She did a job. Thank you.
We'd just like to thank Ms. Johnson, Ms. Breach for uh, giving up their evening tonight. So thank you very much. And then I think Ms. Mark words up and uh, we'll wrap up. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Um, I'm just gonna start by highlighting, reviewing the different special populations of students and under our department. So I'm gonna start first with our special education. Of course, federal law requires um, under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for us to service students with disabilities and make sure that they have access to free and appropriate public education. So you'll see on this slide our historical percentages of special education students in the district. And you'll notice that that continues to number one, increase and number two, be higher than our state average. And then I put a little asterisk at the bottom. We had our December first child count and we are closer to twenty-six percent now, um, for the two thousand twenty-three data. That number does include all of the students that we service throughout the district. So that includes consultation services that students at our non-cub schools receive and also students in our head start locations. All right, next are the students um, that receive section five oh four services. Section five oh four is a civil rights law that um, we ensure students receive appropriate accommodations and modifications. And so our numbers um, just continue to increase just a little bit. And some of those numbers can fluctuate, like a student can go on a five oh four plan, let's say if they're gonna have a surgery and need accommodations based upon that surgery. And then if they're released, then the section five oh four plan um, is terminated. So those numbers can fluctuate even within this school year. All right, next slide are our English learners. And Mrs. Johnson kind of touched on this a little bit. Our English learner population has really grown this school year. So historically, we've been about four or five percent. We have increased a hundred and seventeen additional E L students this year, which brings our percentage to seven percent. So we are really growing. Sixty-nine of the one hundred and seventeen students are non-English speaking adult across the district. Thirty-five of them are in our elementary schools, eighteen at Test and Dennis and sixteen at R H S. And the language, first language that are represented by our English learners are Spanish, Russian, Japanese, Arabic, Hindi, Kacheh and Laos. Questions on that? All right, the next um, that we service are um, the Kennedy Vento homeless students. So under the McKenney Vento Act, we also have to ensure that homeless children and youth have equal access to free and appropriate public education. And so you'll see our students um, that have been identified as homeless over the past three years. Thirty-two so far this school year. I'm sure that we might have more that come for, um, for this school year. And those are identified as students who are doubled up, um, living in motels, hotels, um, shelters, whether they're emergency or transitional or unaccompanied youth or any other situation that's not identified as fixed, regular or adequate nighttime residence for students.
Are those students evenly distributed amongst age? So, I mean, is it, does it skew to older kids or is it just even across?
No, it really is pretty even across the district.
But probably several kids are unreported.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, because this is reported really word of mouth and, and, and secretaries overhearing parents having conversations of, oh, we're living with my parents now because of a situation. And so they're, you know, hopefully sends a light bulb off for them to um, fill out paperwork and we have kind of a flow chart that we use to offer services to students who um, fall under um, these services, so.
I guess we, we, I mean, obviously make it, I mean, I'm guessing there's lots of social. I mean, it, it, you know, you don't want a kid that's homeless.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
I'm sure we're very definitely.
Yes, it's that confidential. And um, Natalie, uh, my secretary will reach out to the families um, once she gets the paperwork in her, in our office, um, just to let them know of support that we can provide to them. We have some financial support and from the McKenney Vento brand that we can provide services or support to them, whether it's if they want to be in an extracurricular and there's um, costs associated with that. If they want to send their kiddos to the Boys and Girls Club or Y K, we can help support the cost of those. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mark. And so President Wong, trustees, with that again, and with our esteemed and astute teacher leaders, building up leaders and our central office, again, being charged with establishing and creating a professional learning organization. Having the, the unwary support from this board, again, providing us with the resources, the tools. Again, the, the guidance to, to move forward. We are slow to surely. Making headway, but to our point, and again, we have nothing ever to hide and transparency. We also still have areas of improvement. I think the positive aspect is that with the system of instruction we have in place, to identify intentionally, uh, identify where those areas are, 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 we can um, we want to, to meet them at a more rapid pace than in, than before. And so I'm extremely excited with the team that we've, we've, we've assembled with the building of leadership, uh, the teachers and, and tier two, tier three educators that are pouring into our students. So extremely um, proud of our students for exercising resilience on a day-to-day basis and showing up. Of what was presented, our attendance rates continually improved. And that is because, uh, again, as was mentioned, students are enjoying the R C S experience.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to session four, our action items. Uh, four point oh one, super tennis contract and extension.
This presented last meeting, I have to for approval.
Motion by members of the Husky. Who's that? Second by the coastal. Sorry, those that are listening, those thoughts and stubborn or layering diet is something. All right, any comments or questions?
Um, I guess I would comment and that I'm gonna vote against it and I just wanted to say why. Um, it's not because I don't want Dr. Wright here, because I think he's doing a great job. I want him to stay here. I do feel like he needs a raise. Um, but I just can't agree with all of the terms of the contract without giving the details, I guess. Um, so I just can't give an explanation because I know it'll be a no vote for me and I don't want it to appear to the public that I'm not in support of Dr. Wright and work that he does. I try to attend events as a school board member. Every time I do, and it's sporadic, Dr. Wright's there. He's always present. Um, I mean, I've worked with him in private settings and group settings and public and he's always the same, always focused on students and what's best for R C S. And so I really appreciate that. Um, I just wanted to say that part as well with how I'm voting, I guess.
Thank you.
I would agree. I, I'm uncomfortable with a number of the terms. I guess the guaranteed increase, the large increase of annuity and the large increase of base salary, I think it's, it's a very rich contract. And, and as a trustee of the corporation, I think we've, we've given a lot of money out this past year. And uh, while the, the data may support that, I, what we've not seen is a I mean, just not seen all of that. So, so I just, I'm just not comfortable with the numbers we have. And so I'll also be going to know uh, more so the terms and uh, we'll move forward.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, I will say, it is a large increase and part of that is because we brought it right at a very low. Um, compared to other, other schools our size, it was definitely, we got a good deal. Just saying that we've been getting a good deal, so to speak, um, in, in the student that we've been paying. Dr. Wright, um, we knew when we offered the contract initially that we would have to. Assuming that um, things continue to go well. So I feel like it's worth doing. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Let's see, none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, um, we'll watch a roll call, uh, members of the folks. Members of the Husky.
Aye.
Does remember Weber?
Nay.
I have an aye. Ms. Brunton?
Nay.
Number Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Pickering?
Aye.
Their vote passes five to two. All right, next is four point oh two, the Neola policies. I would love to entertain a motion to approve the Neola batch one of the final reading, batch two and three on the Thursday final reading.
So, second.
Motion by member Stevens, second by members of the Husky. Comments, questions?
Uh, I'll comment, I'm a hundred percent against this motion. Uh, these policies moving forward without board review, complete review, there's been partial review. And uh, I just think this is, is bad practice. Um, I'll be voting against it, but I mean, if it passes, it passes.
Motion.
I made the motion. However, I'm going to highly recommend that uh, uh, Dr. Wright take the opportunity to uh, commit a committee made up of board members and whoever else uh, to, to do a more in-depth review of them from our level so that we can see and make sure that we are not uh, we're not uh, redundant in any of them and that we are up to date with policies. Uh, so that we are not only meeting the current expectations with our policies, but anticipating uh, future needs as well and that, you know, we can diligently look at them and bring from a board perspective, things that we have implemented, reviewed, so we can bring them, excuse me, I say, that we have reviewed, that we can bring back and we can make recommendations uh, on the immediate and in the future, so that we can say, we're not receiving this solely on recommendations from Neola or anyone else, but all, but the fact that board members and whomever else is involved with it have diligently looked at it and have brought these to the attention of the board.
Thank you, members Stevens.
Yeah, um, I would agree with member Stevens. Um, some of the ones we had questions on, I think from batch one, it makes me a little uncomfortable to approve them just because they, you know, there's some clarification or it's just. Makes me a little uncomfortable to approve them, just because they, you know, there's some clarification or it's just rewriting, but. Um, you know, I'm in agreement with, you know, trying to work together committees so we can dig in. Um, for me, it's a lot about the structure and organization of what we want as a board. Um, and then how's, how that flows down to, you know, the CBA, boy handbook, student handbook, you know, just. To really sort of identify and categorize some of those, you know, legal compliance policies versus, you know. These are things that we think will be great to help uh move things along. Um, so um. You know, that is something I'd like to see pretty much immediately following this is, you know, that move. So we are able to dig in um a little more and get those questions and come to a resolution on. Individual ones that we have questions on, or maybe something else comes up along with that, so.
And if I may add, you know, dating back uh to the days of the covered wagons. The very issues that we're, we're concerning ourselves with, you know, how did we get here, or how, how was this reviewed? Or why is this policy necessary? We've had these in my duration on the board. We've had this same discussion. With other boards and other individual members, you know, at least four or five times before. We have gone through three or four different processes in that time, whether it be dry SBA or now Neola. Or now Neola again, and everything else, but the component that always seems to come up. Is the one that we need to really seriously and urgently put in place after this, if it should pass. And that is to create the committee that on a regular basis reviews those, that we have had those in the batch, that we've had concerns and questions over. Uh, and we can just really break those apart, break them down, discuss as a committee, and then make. Uh revisions if necessary, so that we can come back and say, we have diligently looked at this, and we now see. That this is what is the best uh policy that we can go forward with. And then look and see how the policy goes in with, you know, guidelines and other things to make sure, again. That there's not a redundancy, but they're all, you know, we can tie one into the other. And, but that, again, goes back to the important works of school boards and what our role is, so.
I agree with that completely.
Just to reiterate, I mean, this is not a, an ending point, this is a starting point, so we're not in between. Uh, two different. Policy manuals. We've got one policy manual, and that's what we're working out of instead of two documents that's pieced together. So ju- just to reiterate, this is not an endpoint, this is really a starting point with Neola and continuing that.
However, we have policies that we just approved last month, and the corporation is well protected. And those policies have been well vetted and have been revised completely six years ago. And up until a year and a half ago, were revised regularly. I just, I, I, history teaches us that this board has not always been the best at following through. What it says, and I have big concerns about taking a sweeping action with the promise that we will follow through. Great if we do, but where, where's the, where's the, the carrot and stick to say, you know, you're gonna follow through. And here's the reward. I mean, it just, I think, I, 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 I hope I'm wrong. But I, I think this, I think we're, have possibly end up with a lot of policies that don't truly represent the corporation. And hard for people to find and create more confusion down there.
I would just say to uh Mr. Weber that I'm not letting some of this go. But just as an HR professional, there's, you know, things that, uh, you know, this is what is in my wheelhouse. It's kind of just in my realm um to really try to structure it um and push where. I feel like I can to the best of my ability. Um, so, you know. I'm on team Mr. Weber um with, you know, yes, just pushing this forward, getting answers. Being that little knot that doesn't stop until we kind of all can come to an agreement and. Make sure that it is adjustable for the community and for parents and everyone involved.
And I really appreciate Mr. Weber's concern. I certainly understand it, and I think he just created a, a. A roll call to us as a board, and I mean. If it in fact has been that we have made these promises and it failed to come through in the past. I think it's really right now and immediately incumbent on us to get this together. So that we'll review the policies that we need to review and let this be the starting point, as members Zaleski said. And diligently do this. I, I have offered, uh, this is one of the important things. The, one of the three most important things that we as a board are responsible for doing. And with my work schedule, I, I would like to commit to being on the committee. Uh, if one is selected, if this does pass, to be on a committee to do this, as long as it's after four thirty in the. In the afternoon or evening, but, but I would really like to commit time to being a part of this. So we can do this in a proper way, and hopefully um to Mr. Weber's point. I, I hope that we can prove as a board and as a committee to do this work. So it eradicates any feelings that he may have that it's not gonna get done. And John, I'm not saying that to slight you, I'm saying that because you're just giving us, you know, if this passes. Your thoughts are, are giving us marching orders on what we need to do and what our responsibility is.
All right, there's a motion on the table in a second. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That will call, Ms. Stoltz. Mr. Zaleski.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Nay.
I have a yes and a aye. Uh, Ms. Brunton?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Mm-hmm, I mean, aye.
Ms. Pickering?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. All right, next up is board discussion, any other discussions that we've had? Is anything you will throw out at us? Like you have a committee already formed.
Yes, that, that will be coming for sure. Uh, but no, I, I know that uh Mrs. Hayes Baker uh has several. Events that she shares with us, but one that will be occurring uh this Saturday is that our uh RHS bowling team. Will be competing in state championship journey and wish them the very best. We also have a, I will still, Mrs. Stoltz Thunder, I know that she's uh Dr. Parker's voice. But uh the original museum is having their annual celebration at the performance this Saturday evening. And I know that as trustees, the invitation is there, do you all have your schedule? Can I come today? I know that our central leadership team, we represent, I think the partnership that we've had with Graham, Mr. Dean Worth, Mr. Grohl. And that amazing community has been stellar.
Smaller, oh, I still have all forms, I'm sorry. Some of our very own RHS students will be providing. Uh for this, which is very nice, so kudos to them.
I start one last thing. Um, as I get older, those people have been instrumental in my life, they get older too. And none of us are gonna get out of here alive, and the clock doesn't stop for anyone. Um, just recently, I had the pleasure of being present. To celebrate the life of a retired teacher from Richmond High School, Richmond Community Schools, Mr. Bob Stoner. And I'd known Bob since, or Mr. Stoner, excuse me, the coach as I call him, since my seventh grade year. What was then Gen- Dennis Junior High School. He was my science teacher. He was my homeroom teacher. He became a football coach and my wrestling coach. And um he had suffered a tragedy in his life with the loss of a daughter. Uh, but he was always one of those that he never forgot a name, never forgot a face. Never forgot the importance of the students in his life, and we never forgot the importance of him as a teacher and a coach in our life. I would just really, you know, I say that to honor Mr. Stoner, but um in my time on this board. I've seen um the passing of several people who've spent a career educating me. All of us who uh have been members of this community for a long, long time. And I would like to see some way someday that um as we reflect on their lives, that we, we. Just because they're retired, and it may have been ten years ago or thirty or forty years ago. That when we find these things out, that we continue to celebrate their lives, their importance to our corporation. Because they were the vanguards who set the, the pace and standards for our teachers, for our leaders and everything else. And I think that as a board, we should never forget the sacrifices that they made to bring us to this level today. And although they may be retired, they're still always going to be a member of our uh RCS family.
And we got to uh do some work for Bob and Jeannie in a personal um side and did a lot of construction for them. And uh they're saying Bob and Jeannie, they were, they were amazing. Um, those ones we all love from high school. They just always had a smile on their face, always happy to see. So our condolences go out to their family. Mr. Stoner was a great man.
Yes.
Right, or is there anything else that we will talk about?
We, we do have a board history, correct? Not this, we can leave the next. Is that correct? Okay. Ten or two under twenty-four minutes, just to remind you.
So that's clear, Fred? What was it? All right, guys. With that, I think we are adjourned.
Happy Valentine's Day.